How far?
Over, where I want to go over there.
Oh, there's a handicap. Hello?
I don't want somebody to go walking through like click wall.
Thank you.
Watch out!
I have to say, it was a great experience because I actually went back after spending two years streaming for you. I went back to San Jose State to get my journalism degree. You did something right.
Great, well I'm glad. Life didn't do much, you did it all, but that's cool.
It was a good experience.
Oh wow, well great!
Test that, test that?
Oh good, I'm glad you like it. Yeah, covering football as a streamer is a lot of fun. I did that too one time, that was just a blast. Yeah, wow, that's neat.
Yeah, it was a while ago, I think it was about 11, 12 years ago.
Yeah, Matt, yeah. Well it's a lot of work covering football, you know, you gotta get organized before the game, keep score. Get the interviews done and write it up fast.
The thing I really liked about the event was that it was such a robust practice for such. It was great, I mean that was really like, it was the kind of thing where, you know, when I was in college there was something I'd pick up and teach.
Yeah, no, I know, we don't do one at the Post right now and, you know, I miss it in football season. I couldn't care less about basketball, but... But it is quite an undertaking. On Friday nights when you have like, you know, 10 stringers out there covering different games, they're all filing at the same moment, you know, because of how the deadlines work, it's really something. Yeah, but it is a good thing, I'm glad you enjoyed it.
Yeah, it was, I mean, it was a really good experience, I was gonna talk about it a lot because you're, you know, there's nothing like the pressure of the other.
Oh yeah, that's true, yeah.
And it's so different at a regular level, it's just your flow, it just throws you off.
Yeah, that's really true. Yeah, it's, you just do this every day and you kinda just get into the rhythm. Hey Norma, my name's Dave Price and this is, okay, cool.
Norma, you wanna hand me one of those water bottles?
Yeah, and, and so, I guess we ask the questions. I came up with a little list of them, you wanna look at mine and coordinate them. Okay.
You and I think open the same lines, my first question would love to charters go through.
Isn't that funny?
That's why I'm not asking that one at all.
I think...
Well, it's actually supposed to be about downtown, so I'm not sure that that's gonna fly.
I think it does, because you know, we shouldn't talk about the city. And so, I think that's wrong.
Okay. Hi, Margie Dave Price, yeah, nice to meet you too. Yeah, nice to meet you Jerry.
Hello. Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so we ask a little...
So we got that, I mean, and then...
Because I don't wanna repeat what you're gonna ask and...
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep notes a little bit.
Okay, and you have questions that the public has submitted electronically, right?
That's right, and then I'm, you know, the ones that they've submitted that are the same that you're asking, obviously I'm not gonna ask those. Quite frankly, they're gonna tend to be on what I call the green issues and then issues of transparency and taxes, things like that.
Yeah.
So, I think by the time you get done with downtown and zoning, there'll be almost nothing to apply from the public.
Well, transparency is a big deal in this.
Why do the men have the ends?
There you go, that's it. I was gonna ask about Kim's lawsuit, actually.
Oh, you asked that one because we wouldn't dare.
You, really? Okay, well, I mean, you know, it seems like it's fair game, but, but there's a lot of other ones too. Yeah. And are you gonna keep it straight as to like how much time we got? Maybe we ask the question of the whole group, I know that you kinda want us to do specific people, but...
I think, I think it's, it's the most important question.
Yeah, I think that's the way to go.
Probably sort of a fair amount.
Okay, because I saw on the, on the online forum, some had pointed questions for particular people here. Oh, okay, okay, alright, okay. They, they were kinda, you know, yeah, a little starky, a little bit of a needle leap. Ooh, great question, that's, that's the question they have, that's a good one, yeah. That's cool, and the...
I told you guys to read the American Idol signs.
Oh, that would be funny if we could judge them like American Idol, yeah.
Oh, idol, 417.
Yeah.
You know?
I heard that, kind of the idea of getting our staff's teachers.
How are you doing? Well, I'm helping.
Yeah, I had to think about that. Yeah, I got it, thank you. Well, you know what, there's gonna be a lightning round where, where the candidates will be able to only...
Yeah, there's somebody up there monitoring the running.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, 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 it's pretty cool.
Oh yeah, yeah, that's a good one.
Yeah, hello.
Yeah, that's the thought.
He just switched over, blocking, right?
And then he backed, and then Packard asked him to pay me, since he really was one, right?
That didn't seem quite right.
Well, a lot of cities, I guess it's all in how they organize, I know in Palo Alto, they have a deal where you can't serve consecutive more than two terms, but you can sit out and then move back. And that's what I think he was trying to say, happen. Hopeless will, but then after it's a dust, it'll go on. Well, you know nowadays, cities are putting in little kiosks where you get a parking thing, you put your gas, you pay for it. Yeah, that's almost, yeah. A lot of busy night, all four of us heard headline stories. Oh yeah, we go all the way up to Brooklyn. There's quite an appetite for these.
No, especially, yeah. There's never a shortage.
Yeah, that's really true. But, you know, it's funny, people always tell me Los Altos is... All the time.
Oh yeah, I call it nothing self to self.
Yeah, like a soap opera. Yeah, really.
Just wanna jump up, because it got a...
Well, the parking meter's gonna get like...
What about the three stories, just throw your scores in?
They'll want a speech on that. Yeah, they'll want a speech. I mean, almost what I would do is say like, what circumstances would you allow buildings taller than this? What's the deal, what's the trade-off? Yeah. Do you have a problem with bank stuff?
Alright, if the audience can take our seats, we're ready to begin. So, welcome to the Candidates Forum on Downtown Vibrancy and Sustainability. My name is Margie Swazo, I'm the Chair of the Leadership Team of Greentown Los Altos, and I'm pleased to see so many people here today, this is very exciting. So, tonight with the help of our interviewers and the audience, we'll be asking questions to our six City Council candidates. So, our candidates, as you see, are seated to the left, to the left, and the interviewers here on the right will be doing some introductions. So, from the press, I'd like to please welcome Diego Abaluz of the Los Altos Town Crier and Dave Price of the Palo Alto Daily Post. Diego has been a journalist with the Los Altos Town Crier for the past year. He has some history in Los Altos, having moved here in 1986. He attended Los Altos Public Schools and he graduated from this one here in 1995. He received his Journalism Degree from San Jose State University and has worked for about seven years as an editor and journalist in the Bay Area. A little-known fact, before that, he did nonprofit fundraising. For all of those in the, of us in the nonprofit world, we might be able to pick his brain. So, secondly, Dave Price is the editor and co-founder of the Palo Alto Daily Post. He also started the Palo Alto Daily News in 1995 and sold that paper in 2005. Three years later, he started the Post. Previously, he was a reporter and an editor of newspapers in Ohio and Colorado. For those of you who don't know, the Daily Post was honored in 2011 at the San Francisco Press Club with eight awards, including a first and second place award for the Press Club's News Stories of the Year. Let us welcome our press interviewers, please. And from the community, we're pleased to welcome as interviewer Norma Schroder. Norma is the creator of Los Altos Politico, a public service website with essential news and information about the city and school governance. So, thank you for being here, Norma. I'd also like to recognize our Timekeeper, Mike O'Malley. Mike is a former mayor of Los Altos Hills, he'll be helping to keep me and you all on schedule. So, a big thanks also goes out to Los Altos High School for allowing us to use this venue for this evening. And to Theater Manager James Gibbs, who is a technical whiz. Finally, we wanna thank the sponsors, first of all, Los Altos Forward for spearheading this event. And to our other sponsors, which include the Los Altos Community Foundation, they're listed up at the bottom of the screen. The Los Altos Town Crier, the League of Women Voters, Los Altos Mountain View area. The American Association of University Women of Los Altos and Mountain View. The Los Altos Educational Foundation, and last but not least, Greentown Los Altos. I'd like to recognize also a number of public officials that are here, both the current and former from Los Altos and Los Altos Hills and from Mountain View, both cities and schools. So, thank you for being here and attending. This evening was designed, you're gonna get a chance to introduce yourselves, so give a hand to all the candidates for coming out tonight, thank you. I know, it's a hard road. So, this evening was designed to allow for in-depth examination of the candidates and the issues facing our community. We'll have 24 questions, some of which you, the audience, will also hopefully answer. So, we're gonna be experimenting with technology, and this is actually addressed to the rest of you here. So, I hope you brought your cellphone, because it's gonna come in handy tonight. We're gonna start, we're gonna do an experiment right now to make sure everybody can actually use this technology. So, unlike in the movie theater where you're asked to turn off your cellphone, we're asking you here to take yours out and turn it on, but please put it on mute. And now, if you can read what's up there, or if you received a handout when you came in, you'll see that there is a number to text and a code to text in. So, I'd like you to do this now, if you can type in the number 484-494-2499 into your cellphone messaging, and then type in the code EXR. Are you doing it? Give me a show of hands if you're done with that. Some of you are, some of you aren't, okay. So, in the first field, if you're there, you should see a poll. So, we're gonna practice our first audience polling question. Norma, I'm wondering if you can ask question number one, please?
Certainly. The question is, do you plan to vote in the November 6th Los Altos City Council Elections, yes or no?
I don't think it says yes or no. I think it says yes or of course. We're gonna get those answers, there we go, one vote, yes. Oh no, there is a no, there is a no. Technology in action, four votes, yes. We're hopeful not to see any no's. So, five of us have our cellphones out. You also may have seen earlier, Kim Cranston from Los Altos Forward had put up on the screen an image of this room, because this is also being streamed on the web and will be available later on YouTube, there you go. Quick as a wink, we get the image. So, if folks wanted a view from home, they could, although hopefully it's not this blurry. Okay, now, if you, for those of you who were using your cellphone, please scroll down to the next field. And if you have any questions of any or all of the candidates during the evening, you can text them to the same number and submit those questions directly. So, now on to the forum, which we've all been waiting for. Candidates, again, thank you so much for being here. You have three minutes to introduce yourselves, to give a little statement. And for a total of 18 minutes, we have our Timekeeper Mike keeping us all on track and the timing device over there. When it is green, you can go, when it is yellow, it's a warning that it's going to end soon. And when it's red, it's time to stop and it will beep, to make sure you know. So, John, we'll start with you and we'll move across.
I'm John Baer, currently serving on the Los Altos Planning and Transportation Commission and running for Los Altos City Council. Our family moved to Los Altos 15 years ago, because it's a wonderful place to live and raise a family. Our children attended outstanding neighborhood public schools. As a community volunteer for over 10 years, I've demonstrated my leadership, integrity, and openness. I've worked effectively with the Los Altos community for over a decade, including my service on the Planning Commission for over five years, as its Chair, serving four years on the Neighborhood Traffic Advisory Task Force, and my involvement in creating the Civic Center Master Plan, revising downtown zoning, and creating new downtown design guidelines. I'm also a trustee of the MVLA High School Foundation Endowment. I joined the Traffic Task Force when we created the first plan for neighborhoods to manage cut-through traffic and speeding. During my tenure on the Planning Commission, I've worked with residents, applicants, city staff, and the council to approve numerous new projects, including Pilgrim Haven, Packard Foundation, and Los Altos Gardens. I've also served in the Downtown Committee that changed the zoning to encourage more development along the perimeter of downtown while maintaining the charm and character of state and main streets. The result is over 150,000 square feet of new office and retail space in our downtown. Some of those projects include a new Safeway and a boutique hotel. These changes will bring additional foot traffic to town and will help our existing businesses. As a successful entrepreneur and currently an advisor to international startups, I bring strong business and financial acumen to the council. My priorities, increasing downtown vibrancy while maintaining village charm and character. I'll continue to support new office construction outside the core of our downtown to increase foot traffic. I'll keep a tight rein on city budgets, expenditures, and pension costs, so the city remains in the black. Safe speed limits, crosswalks, and crossing guards, and bike lanes are vital to protecting our community. Great schools are important to Los Altos, and addressing the school facilities issue is a community problem that needs the attention of both the school board and city council. Many of our residents are seniors, we need to provide the right mix of services, programs, and housing options so that we remain a good place to live for all options. A better process to let everyone know about issues that were being considered by the city, getting early community input will ensure that our solutions reflect community needs and values, not just the best engineering solution. I am fortunate to have been endorsed by many community leaders who are listed on my website, www.johnbaer.org. I respectfully ask for your vote, thank you.
Thank you. Megan?
Hello, good evening. I'd like to start by thanking our sponsors for putting on this forum and all of you for coming out to learn more about the candidates. My name is Megan Satterley and I am seeking reelection to the Los Altos City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you these past five years. Today, Los Altos continues to be a wonderful place to live and raise a family. My husband and I feel quite fortunate to be able to raise our two-year-old son here. Let me tell you a bit more about myself. I grew up a few miles away in Protola Valley. I earned a bachelor's degree at Stanford and went on to receive both a law degree and an MBA from UCLA. This education has served me well in my 15-plus-year career at Hewlett-Packard and as a council member. My experience has led me to believe that reliability is a key to success. I have followed through on the commitments that I made in 2007. Despite the difficult economic times, I approved balanced budgets while at the same time putting a plan in place to grow our reserves to 20% by fiscal year 14. I also approved two labor contracts that added second-tier pension plan and increasing employee contributions, though more work is needed. In downtown, I voted for zoning changes that balance the need to refresh the town and preserve its character. The city also invested in infrastructure improvements. As a result, we are seeing private investment, tired buildings are being replaced, storefronts are being refreshed, and vacancy rates are down. In August, there were only two storefront vacancies on Main Street. In addition, I supported a parking management study to enable informed decisions that encourage the types of retail and restaurants we wanna see. I am thrilled to say a new Safeway has been approved. I have supported pedestrian and bicycle improvements throughout the city. A number have been completed, including crosswalks at San Antonio and at locations related to safe routes to schools. In addition, I voted to adopt a long-term planning document to address speeds on collectors. Other accomplishments that I'm proud of include hiring a city manager and signing a new garbage contract, which has increased our diversion to 71% ahead of schedule. In order to achieve these results, I approached my role as a council member the following way. Begin with thorough preparation, listen to all input, consider both the short-term and long-term implications of every decision, strive to be a role model for civility and respect, work to create a culture of continuous improvement. I believe that our city can remain a great place to live and raise a family. The challenges remain much the same. The challenges remain much the same: ensure sound fiscal practices, keep our commercial districts thriving, promotes the safe use of roads, and find ways to engage with all residents. I'm grateful for you for giving me the chance to serve, and I respectfully ask for your vote, thank you.
Thank you, Megan. And Jan?
First of all, thank you to the sponsors of tonight's forum, and thank you all for coming here today. I'm Jan Pepper, and I'm running for council to get things done. I bring a fresh perspective to the council, and will expand the skill set, the skillset of council members, as you will see as I give you some background on myself. Some of you already know me. I moved here in 1985, and I live on Benvenu Avenue. My two children graduated from the wonderful public schools in Los Altos and received a superb education. I enjoyed many hours volunteering in the schools and in my son's Boy Scout troop. Many of you may not know that I have two degrees from Stanford, a bachelor's in civil engineering, and an MBA from the business school. I'm also a registered professional civil engineer in the state of California. I bring my 30 years of business experience to this town, and I've accomplished many things. I've been fortunate to pursue my passion in my professional career, and that is to create a sustainable energy future. And in fact, I have been endorsed by the Sierra Club and the California League of Conservation Voters due to my record in pursuing environmental sustainability. I am an innovator, and I've started and led three companies sticking to a very million-dollar bond portfolio for Santa Clara's municipal utility. I know fiscal responsibility. In fact, I've carefully reviewed Los Altos' latest comprehensive annual financial report so that I know exactly where our revenues come from, what our expenses are, and how our enterprise funds are doing. Throughout my career, I've been active in setting energy policy in California and elsewhere, and know how to collaborate and bring diverse viewpoints together to reach innovative solutions. I know how important it is to bring everyone to the table that has a stake in a position and make sure everyone is heard and understood. As a leader in the League of Women Voters, where I just stepped down as president, I promote transparency, integrity, and listening to all viewpoints. That's what I've done, and that's what I will continue to do. I bring two key strengths: I'm a listener, I will learn, I learn when I listen to you; and second, I have an even temper, I can handle the highs and lows that will come with this job. So the choice is before you. Do you want open access to the city, transparency and communication in action, respectful treatment, new, fresh ideas and approaches to move us forward? Do you want a leader who communicates and has the proven ability to listen and really hear what is being said? I'm looking forward to serving our town as a council member, and I can't wait to work with you to build our future. And I ask you to pick Pepper for city council.
Thank you, Jan.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you to the organizers and the sponsors of tonight's forum, and particularly to all of you in the audience who've chosen to spend tonight with us. I'm Jeanne Bruins, and I'm running for city council for one simple reason: Los Altos is truly a great place to live and raise a family. I want to keep it that way, but I also want to strengthen our sense of community. Like so many of you, my family chose Los Altos for our wonderful schools. Having grown up in a military family, I've treasured putting down roots in one community for 25 years and raising two sons who've attended our neighborhood schools. As I go door-to-door, the number-one issue I hear is that there is a disconnect between members of our council and our residents. This disconnect is compromising our sense of belonging. We need to focus on becoming more inclusive, to have a more effective and meaningful engagement process, a process that respects multiple viewpoints, includes all generations, and uses a variety of methods to reach out to you, the residents. A process that will allow us to work together to address the opportunities of our city. We want a vibrant downtown, so we'll need a master plan, a shared vision, and a roadmap that ties our central business district with our community center. I think we also need to define village character. We need to know what we are trying to protect, and as we have our downtown evolve into the kind of place that we want to spend our time in. Our project-by-project planning puts us at risk of missing strategic opportunities to accomplish long-term goals. We need safe, convenient streets, not only for cars, but also for pedestrians. And if we engage residents early in an open process, we can build the trust and pursue more creative solutions to our transportation needs. Finally, we need to protect one of our greatest assets, our public schools. To do so, we need to end the dissension that exists between the district, BCS, even our own city council. We must work collaboratively and build upon our common principle we all believe in, and we all benefit from providing the highest quality of education for our children. Yes, I will bring my own ideas to the table, but what is most important to me is to hear yours. I would prefer to build a vision together to solve problems together rather than impose my view. I'm hopeful that tonight's forum will give us each an opportunity to drill down on the issues that are important to you. Come November 6th, vote Jeanne Bruins. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanne. Annabelle?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Annabelle Pelham. As candidate for our city council, I offer 30 years of leadership experience and a successful record of establishing values-driven goals and objectives that are achieved through engagement and consensus. I'm a social scientist and a professor at San Francisco State University, where I was a department chair and program director for 25 years. I have exceptional experience in management and administration, budgeting, personnel, strategic planning, and assessment. My area of expertise is gerontology, focused on the macro and policy levels. I know what it takes to create multi-generational vibrant cities. I have published extensively in this field. I also know how to secure and manage government and private grants and contracts, which could provide external funding for a variety of projects in Los Altos. As president of state and national professional associations, I have worked successfully with many very interest groups and have engaged stakeholders to create a unified vision and effectively achieve a wide variety of goals. For the past 10 years, I've taught every summer in Europe. While there, I've studied age-friendly communities, and I have seen firsthand the characteristics that contribute to vibrant and sustainable towns and cities. I would bring this international perspective to government and local governance and creative problem-solving to Los Altos. As a member of the senior commission, I led the complex and successful two-year project to make Los Altos the first age-friendly city in California. This World Health Organization award places us on a world stage as a forward-looking city and attracts goodwill, good publicity, and external funding opportunities. An age-friendly city promotes the benefits of multi-generational and intergenerational life. As a community leader, I want to be sure that Los Altos remains a great place to live, to raise a family, and retire, now and for generations to come. As a community builder, I'm a graduate of the 2012 lead class, a member of the Chamber at LAVA, and I have volunteered for Los Altos Forward and Greentown. I believe it's imperative for council members to actively participate in our business and civic organizations. My leadership style is values-driven, problem-solving, shaped by a process of inclusion and consensus. I have the experience, skills, leadership to be a strong and effective council member, and I have the strategic vision to move Los Altos forward. I respectfully ask for your vote, thank you.
Thank you, Annabelle. And Jerry?
Thank you, and you're welcome, and thank you for coming out. I'm Jerry Sorensen, and I'm running for city council, and I'm asking for your vote if you're interested in solutions. I grew up in the area, and I've lived in Los Altos for 30 years, and I've owned property downtown for five years. As a longtime resident and property owner, I am well aware of the problems and issues that have been hanging around the town for 30 years, and I've experienced firsthand what it takes to deal with our city, some good and some in need of improvement. Solutions to our challenges are my singular motivation for seeking election, specifically for our lingering challenges of downtown development and economic vibrancy, parking, supply and management, traffic, and for the developing challenges of an additional school site and pension reform. Recently, the city published retail sales tax data, and this data shows that Los Altos has been in a state of economic decline since 1995, with retail sales tax dropping 40% in constant dollars. Our tax base is declining, while our salary costs and pension liabilities are increasing at an alarming rate. If we're not moving forward, then by definition, we're falling backwards compared to our surrounding communities. My campaign slogan is "Solutions, Not Agendas," and there's a reason for those words. I believe if the current council wanted to solve our problems after all the money that's been spent on consultants, something could have been done about downtown vibrancy, parking, and traffic. It seems that we have more folks that are working at obstructing development than supporting development while claiming to be for a vibrant downtown. If we're serious about traffic, why did we get rid of the Traffic Commission? If we're serious about parking, why has the council ignored the last five parking studies and reduced parking supply by more than 100 spaces? The latest $150,000 report will have the same findings and essentially make the same recommendations as the report that was completed in 1993. Why is this council rated nine years to address parking when the recommendations have been available for 20 years? We spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on consultant reports, often duplicating old reports only to ignore them. Why do the report only to ignore the recommendations unless there is another agenda? I've been working with other municipalities regarding their traffic, parking, and downtown vibrancy issues, so let's put this expertise right here to work in Los Altos. I'm confident that working with the community that I can develop solutions to our challenges that will be fully supported by our residents, merchants, and property owners. So without community involvement and support, we can expect more of the same. So for solutions, please visit sorensenforcouncil.org and vote for Jerry Sorensen on November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give a hand to all the candidates, they're very informative. We're going to move on to our first round of questions, but before we do, I do want to mention that this process has also taken advantage of technology in the form of Google Moderator to draw questions from the community that are of interest and relevance to them. So if there are folks who couldn't be here tonight, perhaps they, you know, put a question or two on the Google Moderator site. We had 100 people submit 96 questions, and 1,847 votes were cast. Another tidbit, which Hank Drew shared with me earlier, is that this is being broadcast as a Google Hangout, and there's someone from Japan watching, so perhaps you know someone there. Okay, so the next round, we have 36 minutes. The questions can be asked by the interviewers of all or of individual candidates with follow-up as appropriate. The interviewers have red cards, and so if they would like to make a follow-up question, they can hold up their red card. So for example, for question one, we'll have interviewer one, which is Diego, and each candidate will have, if it's an all candidate question, will have one minute to answer the question. And then we'll move on to Dave Price, who will ask a second question, and likewise, you'll each have one minute to answer those questions.
Yes, so question on the format. So how will we know whether we're all answering the question or only some are answering the question?
It'll be based on the question that is asked by the interviewer. So the interviewer will direct it to one or all of you.
So either one answer or six answers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And the Google moderated questions, at least some of those, will be reflected by our community interviewer Norma Schroeder. The press, it's a wild card.
Are we ready?
Yes, we're ready.
Okay.
Question number one, Diego?
So this goes out to all of our council candidates. Obviously, this forum is about downtown vibrancy and sustainability, so I wanted to ask each of you, what does the term downtown vibrancy mean to you? Define it for me.
So we'll start again now with you, Megan, and go from number two, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So to me, downtown vibrancy means people are attracted to come downtown for their, to purchase their goods, receive their services, or to dine or meet friends. And they are encouraged to do that because they are attracted by their restaurant-retail environment, they're attracted by the other people on the street, the other people populating the various restaurants and retail. To me, that would signify vibrancy.
Okay.
To me, vibrancy...
Just one, sorry, Jan. Go ahead.
To me, vibrancy would mean that there are people on the street downtown, that if I walk around, I'll see a lot of friends there, have people to hang out with, go have a cup of coffee with, and that there'll be activities in stores for all ages. There'll be stores and activities for seniors, for children, for teenagers, and for middle agers like me.
For me, downtown vibrancy means feet on the street. And I agree with the previous speakers here, you know, it's a sense of liveliness down there. It's a place to be, it's a place you want to stay, you want to gather, you see your friendly faces, and it's a place that is open in the day as well as into the evening and offers something for all generations.
Thank you. Annabelle?
Thank you. I happen to have a list. That would be a core plan that places an emphasis on pedestrians, cycling, public transport, and automobiles in that order, more bicycle racks and safe bike lanes, a variety of parklets and parklight environments, a mini-fixed route shuttle bus that's battery-operated or natural gas, a variety of activities that link Los Altos downtown to the Foothill College community, a public-private partnership for free Wi-Fi in downtown Los Altos, an emphasis on the social dimensions of Los Altos to create a lively sense of place, and promoting creative ways to increase moderate-income housing so that our children and grandchildren can live here.
So for me, downtown vibrancy is about great architecture, it's about a sense of place, a great sense of place. It's where people want to be, where they want to visit with other people, be with others. It's a place that is economically and socially vibrant. It works, and today, we don't have an economically vibrant downtown. So we need to make sure it's economically vibrant so that we can attract the types of businesses that we'd like to have and succeed.
And John?
So vibrancy is a combination of the tangible and the intangible. The tangible is feet on the street, it's restaurants, it's places to shop, places that we can all shop for all ages. The intangibles is what we really want, however. It's a sense of community, it's a sense of place. It's a place to go that feels good, that feels like home. We have that now, but we don't have enough feet, we don't have enough retail. And the challenge that we face is, how do we keep that wonderful sense of feeling good about our downtown just being there, but also increasing the level of activity? More restaurants, more retail places for all of us to shop, more reasons to stay, go downtown, and stay downtown.
Thank you. Dave Price, question number two.
Yeah, a follow-up to Diego's question. It seems to me like downtown, the sidewalks roll up like at about 6 o'clock at night. How late should downtown be vibrant? That is, are you okay with nightclubs downtown, bars? What kind of nighttime activity would you be all right with, or should we shut down the downtown at the same time we do now?
And Jan, we'll start with you now.
How late should we be, should it be vibrant downtown? Definitely later than it is right now. I remember when I first moved here, there was the Main Street Cafe... I remember when I first moved here, there was the Main Street Cafe on Main Street, and they used to have bands there, and they would stay open until 2:00 in the morning. And you could go there and have dinner and dance and have a drink, and it was a really fun time. So I think with some limitations that we should be, stay open late, but not, but in the areas so that it doesn't bother the people who live downtown. So it would be on those core streets on Main Street and State Street. I also think if we had a movie theater, you know, that would help to keep people out later, and hopefully, the restaurants would stay open so that after the movies, you could go out and have some cake and ice cream and coffee. So I'd say much later than it is now.
I'm definitely for not rolling up our sidewalks, and I think we do need to be open later. But I also think it depends on what we try to bring downtown and what we want that nighttime or that evening time to be. The other thing I was going to say is, you know, we've got what I would refer to as a social experiment going on in our downtown right now, which is our First Friday activity. And on the first Friday of every month, we keep the city and our sidewalks open until 8:00 PM. And we're going to try, and we'll push the envelope this first Friday, and go to 10:00 PM. And I would invite everybody to come out, come downtown and get a sense of what it feels like when we don't roll up our sidewalks. We do have to strike a balance, and we do have to be cognizant of the residents that do live around our downtown. But at the same time, that should not put a stranglehold on what we can offer. Thank you.
I agree. It would be really good if we could stay open later downtown for a larger variety of activities. I'd like to also echo the First Fridays. I think it's been a really good effort to bring residents downtown and see shops and restaurants that are staying open later. On my walks throughout Los Altos, some of the suggestions that I've heard for downtown, some of the wishes include a jazz club. Apparently, there was a blues and jazz club at one point in the downstairs area of Boyce Jour. It would be really wonderful if we could get that started going again. Many people have asked for a larger variety of restaurants. And also, I've heard a lot of requests for a small theater. And the theater, I was told, could also have a little small coffee shop as part of it that could stay open late. So yes, I agree. It would be really nice if we could have downtown more vibrant after hours. Thanks.
So Jan, I was a frequent visitor of the Main Street Bar Grill and Max T. Room and the Piano Bar, Max T. Room, when I was younger, and they were there. I think, Dave, it's an organic process. I think businesses will stay open as long as they can make money. Tonight, you could probably lay down in the middle of Main Street at 8:30 and not get hit by a car. In fact, you might be able to lay down on Foothill Expressway and not get hit by a car. So I think it seeks its own time limits. I don't think it's for the council to decide how late somebody should stay open or not stay open. We had a nice downtown. There was some activity and some vibrance when Max and Main Street were there. So I think it's an organic process, and it's supported by how many people we have in our downtown, and we don't have enough people today. The more we have, the later those businesses will stay open.
So I'm going to focus on quality, not necessarily quantity. We want to have good things available for our residents when our residents want them. That means more restaurants, more retail, and yes, closing up at 6:00 is way too early. My wife and I and my son had to eat dinner one Saturday night, and by 8:00, the restaurant was closed. It's way too early, you know? But how late places stay open is a question of what the establishment is. Love to see, my son's 14, he'd love to have more things to do on a Saturday night other than hang out at Walgreens while the movie's playing. And your kids do, too. And our kids are good. It's a safe environment, but we need to have more activities for all ages.
Okay, honestly, I think I've forgotten the question at this point. So right now, there's nothing prohibiting a business from staying open later, and I support a variety of things being open later. Our downtown is dominated by retail. We are fortunate in that way. I don't envision us becoming a pub-curling town. I, you know, for as much as I enjoy Castro Street and encountering the drunks on occasion is not what I think of as a quality downtown experience in Los Altos. But that doesn't mean that having a bar or a nightclub or restaurants that stay open until midnight, there's no reason why that can't happen. But I, as far as being what, you know, some might think of, and when you think late-night entertainment, San Francisco Castro Street, no, I don't envision that happening in Los Altos.
Thank you. Norma, question number three.
Well, while we're talking about nightlife, let's talk about signs. We had quite a few questions about signs and the policy about signs, especially digital signs, illuminated signs. They're hours of operation, some accusations of selective enforcement on signs. And would you please describe your stand and understanding of, about signs in the city and how they would contribute to vibrancy and nightlife?
Is that an all question?
It's an all question, yes.
Jeannie's next, yeah.
Okay, sorry, we're all still trying to--
While we're talking about nightlife, let's discuss signs, digital signs, illuminated signs. There were quite a few questions from the community about signs, some accusations of selective enforcement of sign rules, and suggestions from the commercial community that the sign restrictions and ordinances were too restrictive to permit good vibrancy. Would you please, all of you, describe your position about signs and the zoning and ordinances about signs, especially illuminated ones? Thank you.
Okay. First of all, in terms of the signs, yeah, signs, one could say, and link it to vibrancy. But I look at signs and link it more to the character of our town. I think there are signs that, you know, some of our, like the use of A-frames that are tastefully done, that represent the character of the business establishment. You know, I think it's disappointing when you see those go away. In terms of the digital signs, the electronic signs, no, I'm not for having the neon sign approach to downtown Los Altos. But that said, I think there are ways, and the technology does exist, that allows some signs with some proper illumination without being these bright billboard-type signs that are tastefully done, that should be kind of considered. I really do believe that the forum, we really need to engage some of the merchants and understand or give them an opportunity to make a proposal and to look at whether or not there is a benefit in allowing them to provide some additional signage.
I would be in favor of tasteful and attractive and not very large illuminated signs. But I think we would want to have a group of people serve, excuse me, as a quality control group to have a look at these and just kind of make some determinations if they would be acceptable or not. In terms of digital signs, I would be open to an experiment, maybe a month-long experiment for something small, again, and tasteful in terms of digital signs, and see just how they work. And I think if we could have a short experiment that we all agree to and see what we think about it, and we can make a decision. I think that would be fair, that would be inclusive, everyone could participate in the process, and we see what we think about it. If most people don't like them and don't want to continue, then we could let those go. But I'm in favor of illuminated signs that are tasteful and attractive, not too large, and a quality control group making a determination.
So I do think that the sign ordinance, the most recent sign ordinance, is a little bit onerous and that it should be looked at. I can remember back in those days when Max was open, that there was a sweet shop, a candy store on Main Street. It was called The Sweet Shop, just like the one on Los Altos Avenue today. And there was a big controversy about their neon sign. The neon sign was, I think, green and red, and it said The Sweet Shop. And there was some controversy about that, but once it was in place, everybody liked it. Everybody thought it was very nice and very tasteful, and they thought it worked out just fine, and nobody was upset or offended by it. So I think we need to make sure that our business owners, our merchants are involved in this process, and I think the sign ordinance should be loosened up.
So the council voted in favor of digital signs earlier this year. They are allowed. The original ordinance came to the Planning Commission. At the time, it was proposing not to allow digital signs. The Planning Commission was in favor of digital signs, and after getting some additional information about light levels, anybody who's ever driven on 101, you know the exit by Whipple Avenue, that giant illuminated sign that practically blinds you. Our only concern was just making sure that we didn't create a public hazard. But the digital signs are allowed. It was part of a public process, both at the Planning Commission and at the City Council.
I agree that, based on my reading of the Google Moderator questions, there seems to be some confusion on this point. I was on the original sign committee, the original, the recent sign committee, and we did put forward a ban on digital signs because we weren't quite sure how to regulate them to keep them within the character of Los Altos. And what we expressly wanted was for the business communities to come back to us and provide us some suggestion as to how we might meet their needs and do appropriate regulation. So in fact, as candidate Bear just mentioned, that did happen earlier this year. I believe that the sign ordinance is a living document, like all of our ordinances, and I have expressed to the business communities numerous times that if there is a problem with what is there, I am willing to adjust it.
I would say that, again, this is something where we should have the business community and the residents of the town come together and decide what is appropriate. We do have this downtown design guidelines that a lot of people spend a lot of time putting together that does describe what the signage should be like. And if that isn't what we want to have, or it doesn't meet the needs of the business community, then we should change it. And I think that experimenting and trying something for a month or two and seeing what the reaction is, seeing if it increases business, if a business owner wants to put in a different kind of sign to try to attract more business, that they could try that, and residents could react to it and see how it works.
Thank you. You have a follow-up question, Dave?
I do for two of the candidates, for Annabelle and for Jeannie. You each mentioned in your response that you would favor tasteful signs. I've seen sign ordinances before, and they regulate things like the height of the sign, its size, its luminosity. How do you, how would you propose to regulate the tastefulness of signs?
I'll take a chance at that. I think it would be good to have a group of business owners and citizens to have a look at the offerings and see what they think and make suggestions. I think it would be inclusive. I think there's a lot of smart people in Los Altos. We'll get some good ideas. Maybe with community input, the signs would be more attractive. They would look better. Perhaps a business owner would find them improved. So I really trust the good judgment of our citizens. So I think if we have a little group that makes suggestions and recommendations, I think that would be a good idea.
I think it's a great question. It kind of puts us on the spot. The way I look at this is not everything has to be regulated through actual ordinances where you actually have to articulate and be able to measure against that. For the same reason, we don't define what good architecture is. You know, we know it when we see it type of thing. We don't legislate architecture. I don't know if we can legislate tastefulness of signs. But I do believe we can have a governance structure that allows us to be responsive to feedback that we receive. I think we know when something is offensive, and I think we know when something is, you know, we can respond favorably to it.
Next question, Diego and Annabelle will be the first answerer.
All right. This is for all the council candidates. We've heard the term village character before, so I want to ask each of you, how do you balance protecting village character and at the same time encourage private investment and development in the downtown area?
Just to give Annabelle more time, could you repeat the question?
Sorry about that. We've heard the term village character often in town. So I want to ask you, how do you balance protecting village character and at the same time encourage private investment and development in the downtown area?
Well, I firmly believe that we need a master plan that links downtown and the civic center. I really do. We would not build a home without it. I think we cannot revitalize our city without it. We need a master plan. We also need safe crossings on San Antonio and Foothill Expressway so that more traffic, foot traffic, pedestrian traffic can move back and forth. I think that's important. I really support an integration, an intergenerational community center. I think Los Altos deserves it. Our citizens want it. I have heard it over and over again. We could create a model community center, I believe, that would attract more foot traffic, more cycling, more feet on the street. I think downtown zoning needs to be predictable so people know what's happening, forward-looking. We really need to work on traffic.
So a village character is, it means a lot of things to a lot of people, Diego, and I always love the term. I can't tell you what it is, but I know it when I see it, which is a nice way of saying it's never what you want it to be. For me, village character is about great streets and it's about great architecture. And we need to have a nice set of design guidelines that are objectified so that people can trust the process. And if they meet those guidelines, then we will have projects that the town can be proud So I think it starts there. It's great architecture, and great architecture, village character is not wrapped up in the height of the building. It's not one-story cinder block buildings, which is what we have predominantly on Main Street. So it means a lot of other things.
So I was on the downtown committee, which looked at revising and actually changing the zoning in our downtown. And that was a thoughtful process. We looked at several cities as examples of good cities and bad cities. The good cities were Los Gatos and Carmel. And what we saw is they increased density on the perimeter, allowing new office buildings while maintaining the charm and character of their downtown. And charm and character means pedestrian-scale buildings, open sidewalks, places, storefronts that are of interest to people to look at. And we've seen a major result of those changes. We have 150,000 square feet of new retail and Class A office building in downtown. Sales tax revenue, folks, is up 9% in the first quarter of 2012 versus 2011. So things are getting better, and they're going to get better yet with new offices throughout our downtown.
So I would like to comment. I'm really impressed with all the candidates up here. You should see the lists and notes, and I mean, a lot of preparation went into it, so I'm glad so many of you are out here to listen to it. I believe village character means it's inviting to people, it's a variety of architecture built at a smaller pedestrian scale than you might find in larger urban formats. I believe the way you balance protecting village character and encouraging downtown development is through zoning and through our downtown development design guidelines. I voted to modify zoning. It has resulted in development that we're seeing. I'm hearing some feedback specifically with regard to setbacks on First Street. I think there may be an opportunity to take a look at that, to see if we might need to modify what the zoning says relative to that to keep our village character. But I believe zoning and the downtown design guidelines are the way we strike that balance. But I believe zoning and the downtown design guidelines are the way we strike that balance.
To start off with, let's talk about village character. And to me, village character is that small-town feel where we have events like the pet parade and the festival of lights and farmer's market and movies night, and where we just see our friends and neighbors downtown. And we can keep that small-town feel and have businesses that address the retail needs of our residents first, and then we need to support those businesses by shopping there. In order to encourage private investment, we need to have rules that developers can count on. We can't keep changing the finish line. We had, we need to have a plan and agree on what that plan is, and then go ahead and implement it and not keep changing the rules. And that way, developers will be good in coming here and helping to create the Los Altos that we want, that has the village charm and the economic vibrancy.
Once again, I think what we're seeing here is, you know, this is another term, village character, that seems to be in the eye of the beholder or the experience of the person out there. Like some of the others up here, I don't believe it is about just purely the heights of the building. It is about all the attributes, all the amenities, and the activity level that happens in our town. So how would I balance this out? You know, my starting point, like Annabelle, is with the master planning process. And one of the key elements in a master planning process is defining our needs, our wants, and our desires. And it's looking at what makes our downtown the place to be. And one element of that is village character. I really think it's going to be important for us to be able to define and wrap our heads around village character, not by, I mean, you have six people up here with six different definitions. I think we got to engage the community, find out what it is, so we know that we're not throwing the baby out with the bathwater, because village character is so important to this community.
Thank you. Question number five, Dave?
Okay, should the city do anything to protect independent local businesses from being squeezed out by chain stores downtown? In other words, when you begin to redevelop a downtown area, we've seen this across the peninsula, the chain stores start to come in, the independents start to disappear. And if that's in Los Altos's future, what, if anything, should the city do? Maybe the city should have a hands-off and just let things happen, or maybe there should be some role to protect the independents? That's kind of the question. Should the city do anything to help out the independents, to keep them downtown, to keep some sort of a mix?
Well, I think more of a hands-off approach would be my approach, but I think that the city absolutely should do something to help the businesses, which is to create feet on the street, to create office developments that will draw people in to town. And I'm going to take this moment. John has said three times that we have 150,000 new square feet. Well, that's not actually accurate. We have a net increase of 1,000 square feet in the last 10 years. 1,000. He talks about seven projects. There's only five of them in downtown, and it's only 1,000 net office square feet in 10 years. That is very discouraging. So, and when you have a planning commissioner that thinks that that is an accomplishment when you only have 1,000 net square feet over 10 years, that does not lead developers to want to come to town.
I think it's really important to protect the businesses that we have now with feet on the street and everything that we can do to promote the small business interest. At the same time, we have to understand that many of our citizens are asking for larger chains. Many people have told me on their walks that they would love to see an Apple store downtown or a dress shop that's similar to the kind of thing they would see at Stanford Shopping Center. Many people tell me they would rather shop in downtown Los Altos than Stanford Shopping Center. So if we could attract more of those larger enterprises, I think it would be good. Something to think about, Chicago has entertained an interesting idea where they develop public-private partnerships to develop infrastructure. And so rather than infrastructure, we might think of public-private partnerships to support our smaller businesses downtown.
So the order actually would go from Jerry to John, so sorry about that, Annabelle. I didn't catch it early enough, but thank you, John. I'll just finish with Jeannie.
Okay, so what we need to do are two things. First, we need to help the businesses that are already in our downtown. We have approved significant number of new projects. The new project on First and Main Street alone is 12,400 square feet of retail space, 18,500 square feet of Grade A office. That will bring additional people in town, which will help the existing businesses. It'll give also our residents a greater selection of retail and restaurants. Secondly, we have the opportunity to start bringing in new, other new businesses into town who can add to the vibrancy, and we can also get rid of the silly rules that make it difficult for our existing businesses to be successful. And if we do all those things, we will add to the vibrancy of our downtown. Frankly, I already see it. I go downtown practically every day, and it's getting harder and harder to find empty streets.
I look forward to having this problem in the next four years. That would tell me we are hugely successful downtown. I believe that we want to have the strongest retailers and restaurateurs, that residents want to shop and patronize, and therefore I would let the economy manage that situation.
I would say that we need to have a community conversation to create a vision for what we want downtown and for an integrated downtown and civic center area. And when we create that vision, we can think about the businesses we want to have and the businesses that we will go to. And we should work then with the developers and the residents and the city staff to bring this vision to pass. But we already have chains downtown. We have Peet's, we have Starbucks, we have Boulanger. And even though we have Peet's and Starbucks, there are new independent coffee houses opening up. So I think that, you know, the market seems to be indicating what kind of businesses will be successful downtown, and we seem to be attracting coffee houses. It may be that we need some anchor tenants that are larger firms so that we can really get the vibrancy going, and that would be part of the community conversation and the visioning.
Again, I will go back to the need for a master planning process because, yet again, another one of the elements of that is trying to understand what we need in terms of our business diversity, in terms of retail services, restaurants, nightclubs, as was mentioned over there. I think we really need to look at this, you know, right now, in terms of, the question really was not about vibrancy, it was about protecting our independent local businesses. The natural protection of those businesses today is how the properties are owned by property owners. You know, we have these 25-foot storefronts. It's hard to bring a big chain into a 25-foot storefront. But as we start looking and as these properties start developing, changing hands, and maybe coming together and merging, again, I think we need to have a vision. We need to understand where we want to go so that we can, you know, go in the direction we want to and not find the big chains that squeeze out like we've had in some of our small business districts. Our video, you know, our local video stores suddenly got taken over with Blockbuster. So I think we need to have a plan.
Thank you. Our next round is a short-answer round. City council members often have to make yes...